Commissioners, we're live again.
Hey, welcome back from our break. Monday morning. And now we have Ms. McKenzie, our public relations.
Yes, hello Commissioners, how are you?
Great.
Good, thanks.
Good, okay, I'm gonna dive in with just a couple of numbers that we go over. First with our social media. Facebook pages this month were really high in terms of impressions and engagement and our engagement rate. We saw 225,000 impressions this month. Just a lot of, a couple pieces of content that we had really was shared a lot, and I'll get to those in a minute. Engagements, which is, you know, likes, comments, shares, people engaging with our content. We had 19,147, which is up about 430% from where we normally see that. And then our engagement rate was up eight, was up to 8.5%, which is actually quite high engagement rate. It's about 30% higher than where we were this, like the last 30 days, so we were trending up there. A lot of that is due to a couple of posts that got a lot of just engagement. And it's not one actually I thought it would be, it's the Rainbow Bridge update. I'm not really sure why that one blew up, but it was shared 173 times, which means we had a ton of people look at it from all sorts of different places. Ironically, that post also gained us about 200 followers. So for the last 30 days, we gained 278 followers on Facebook total. But that one post just drove a lot of, it drove a lot of engagement, so who knows? Honestly, the world of social media is sometimes a mystery to me, just when I think I have it figured out? Just kidding, so apparently sharing ITD updates, real quality for our social media. So we'll just continue to do that, yeah.
You, you don't engage with those folks, though, you just, you just...
We, we do sometimes, I mean, a lot of it is just people, you know, chatting and commenting and things like that. Us as the account, I'm, I'm happy to engage, but most of my instruction has been just to sort of let it ride, unless I am directed with specific communication or there's a fact check that we need. For that particular post, the Rainbow Bridge update, it was a lot of just commentary in general on road construction and summer construction season and speculation on what's going on with Rainbow Bridge. So none of it was necessarily positive or negative, it was just conversation. But that post got us, got in front of a lot of people, we shall say. So we have continued with our, kind of what I would say, our updated social content calendar. On average, we're posting about 40 posts per month. A lot of times we're doing a couple posts per day, some of it's informational, some of it is pulling some of that information out that we don't necessarily talk about all that often, but is really great for the public to know. So we've been working with the departments on that, and I think that's going pretty well. So flipping over to the website, in the last 30 days, we've had 20, about, well, about 30,000 page views seen by about 10,500 individual people. Of those 10,500 visitors in the last 30 days to the website, 8,900 are new visitors. So we're still seeing a pretty high ratio of new visitors to our site every month. That's pretty average for us, but it, again, like in terms of other websites that I have, the amount of new people coming to our website continues to be quite large, so people are finding us. What they were looking at this month, primarily assessment information, the assessor's office, property assessment pages. We have multiple ways they can get to that, and that accounted for five of the top 10 visited pages this month is something to do with property assessment. Otherwise, it was transfer site and sheriff's office and online services. So people are definitely, makes sense, you got your assessment notice in the mail, everyone wanted to take a look at that. So let me look at, switching pages here. In terms of the cities, the active users, this says Phoenix, and then Boise, McCall, Salt Lake City, Nampa, Meridian, and Seattle. My, my suspicion is Phoenix is not a city that we see often on our website, and it's either a bot or it is the IP addresses from whatever internet service provider was routing through there, and that's where people, that's where their city is picking up just from their IP address based on their service provider. So it could be a couple of those things, I don't think it's actually, like, I don't think 2,000 people in Phoenix actually looked up Valley County, you know, Idaho, maybe, but it has more to do with their IP address, so. Yeah, that's great. Other than that, just working with a couple departments on some, just, you know, individual promotional stuff. We're working with the recreation advisory board to update the recreation plan, the strategic plan with some, with some things. And then I did, I know, I don't, I, I know Sherry's not there today, I had some questions that I'll email over. She had mentioned that the county's wanting to kind of update how the county supports other organizations with like essentially grant money and put a more formal process in place. And so she had asked me to maybe work on some, you know, marketing and promotion around that. I had some additional questions, so I can email those over to the board as a whole so that we can start the conversation on that and, and get that in the works.
Cool.
Cool. Awesome.
Worked, that was a good presentation, that's, you're fast.
Well, I speak fast, I know, it's a thing, sorry.
What was that first part you said about 225,000, just?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, 225,000 impressions, which is the number of times content from our Facebook page was seen by someone. It, it could be the same someone, but that someone, if they saw it five times, it counts toward that, so it's not necessarily individual things, but our content was shown to an eyeball 225,000 times this month, which is really, what it, it's, well, it's 350% higher than where we were last month, so it's definitely a big jump. I think it had to do with a couple, just a couple of posts that got a lot of engagement, so.
That's a lot of people.
Lot of people, I know. Yeah, for sure.
Trying to keep this place secret, it's gone.
Who knew that our county information was so interesting to everybody? Great, love it. Well, I'm happy to help with any other projects that come up, and we'll just kind of keep doing what we're doing.
Yep, and send us that information that Sherry had talked about.
Perfect.
And we appreciate it.
Can do.
Thank you, McKenzie.
All right, thanks so much.
You bet. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
How do people have that kind of energy, that's amazing. Well, Dan, might as well. Get you going, Road and Bridge. Twenty-five minutes early, so we're, we're going good. Want me to just dive into what I got?
Dive into whatever, whatever you got.
Couple things to note here, we've got the Warren Wagon Guard Rail project, which LTAC is administering. We have went through the rank, ranking problem, or ranking problem. Ranking of the proposals, and so we have a selected consultant. They have negotiated the contract, this is where typically ITD, or sorry, LTAC does a majority administration of that project. But just so you know, we're probably gonna get underway with surveying it. So you'll start to see more activity up in Warren Wagon area.
Yeah, we took a drive up there Sunday, a week ago, me and the wife up to Warren. And I was looking at those guard rails, oh my goodness, they are hammered. Yeah. They're bad.
There are certain locations which identified specific areas where, this is where the safety program that LTAC administers. We had a couple of deaths in that area there, which triggered, you know, a high likelihood that we were gonna receive the federal funds. So we ended up applying for it and receiving it. So we're in that kind of formal process now of just getting started with the design of it. And then, you know, this is one of those areas where we can do fixed price variable quantity is what I'm hoping the contract will be where we have a set amount. And in the past, LTAC had shown favorable to do those kinds of contracts. This is where the contractor will give us a price per linear feet, however far we can go with that price. So we're gonna try to use up as much as we can with it. East Lake Fork Road, this is one that has been kind of sitting there for a while because of the environmental issue that we're trying to deal with. This is wetlands that we are going to encroach on, so we have to get a wetlands bank credit, is what we were anticipating. This project is out in 2028, so we've got a bit of time on our side to await to get the... I'm understanding that there's a wetlands bank that is being reviewed currently by, by the Corps in this area, so.
I know you say bank. I've always understood on wetlands that if you take away wetlands here, you gotta add back same amount over here.
Yeah, so when you do any impacts, in the past, we, we have had, you know, trying to improve a wetlands within that geographical area of the actual project. So in this particular case, it would be a bank at some other location that would develop their bank utilizing these credits.
So when you're saying credits, you're talking about funds from the county?
Yeah, we would pay. And I'm not quite sure of the, the amount of what that would be yet, but...
Is that something that the Corps determines, or is that something?
So it, it will be something that will be fully analyzed by the Corps to identify what, how mu, how many credits, what they can be used for. In, in most cases, it's always within the the area of impact of all of the drainage in the area. So if, if the project is here in Valley County, then if the bank is located here, we can easily buy the credit to improve that.
Okay.
And, you know, it's a benefit not only for us, but other agencies like ITD, they would have to perform the same type of improvement on, on any impacts to wetlands.
So for the project to go ahead, and I, yeah, I remember reading it in the LTAC reel in '28, at the end of '27, we need to have that put to bed, that piece.
Yeah, I, well, there's a few other things that have to happen prior to that, so it would happen even before '27. So hopefully next year we'll get some resolution on the full impact of that.
Only seen one truck like this over the edge toward that ditch, how he kept from going all the way in, I have no idea. Yeah, that's, can be a narrow stretch sometimes, so.
The other project, Abstein Bridge, this is one where we're... I was hoping that we could get a bid, the bid opening by the end of, the bid opening by the end of the month. With some review from legal, we had to postpone that, so we're gonna, we're moving that into next month, probably into next month to, to make sure that all of the the verbiage in the, in the contracts are consistent with what, what all of our contracts are.
So we probably, we probably won't see construction till next year, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, so it really, we just really have to get it out for advertisement so we can get a contractor to order the, the bridge. So that, I think there's a lead time of about eight to nine months. So I need to make sure that we get that ordered quickly so that he's able to get out there.
Is this bridge repair, or is this replacing the Abstein Bridge?
It's actually replacing it. The, the old bridge is one of, it's one of the oldest bridges. It has been moved a couple of times, I guess, so it's a steel truss bridge. They were anticipating on keeping it as part of a kind of like a cross path in the event that there's a, some type of impact on, on the new bridge so that, you know, they have connectivity in that particular area. So and also there's utilities that we were trying to avoid to move.
Going along, going along on the underside of the bridge, yep.
So there's that one. Our, I call it the Little B Program. This is the, you know, local improvement for local bridge program that LTAC is administering. This is all state funded, so there's no federal funds associated with it. This, we have three... We have one project, but three separate locations of improving a bridge rehab in one area and then two covert inserts that we're gonna do. So this, if you recall, this was supposed to have a bid opening last month, but there was some confusion with the submittal requirements. So they ended up re-advertising it, and the bid are due by Thursday this week. So hopefully we'll hear back on, on that by the, by the end of Thursday, I'm hoping, so.
So when are the bids gonna come in for the S Bridge?
Oh, well, that's, we can talk about that when I get there.
I'll probably never not stop bringing that up.
I get that, I get that. So I have a Four Corners kickoff meeting next week. This is, if you recall, we received some FEMA funds to do some improvements off of West Mountain for covert mitigation. And, and it's really about when we have these fires in those areas, and FEMA is wanting to give us some money to help improve that area because we think there'll be an impact with landslides.
Not an option, yeah, yeah.
So hopefully that will go well, that's next week. Lakeshore, this is, now this is an interesting twist. This was something that I wanted to push, and we ended up getting it in that direction, which is LTAC will administer the Lakeshore Flap Project. Doesn't happen too often, but based on the conversation I had with Western Federal Lands and with LTAC, it, I think it would make the most sense that LTAC were to administer it because of the highly likelihood that this project will be seen quite often in, in the public, and I just wanted to make sure that there's a local presence. And I think when, when, when you have a Western Federal Lands project that is being done in Vancouver, Washington, it, it doesn't have that connectivity that I think is missing. So I heard from Leila that this will now go to them in terms of their normal federal aid process.
So when you're talking about Lakeshore Project, explain that to me, I, I...
So this is where the, essentially where the... Oh, I wanna say it was a couple of years ago where the city ended their Western Federal Lands project, and we're gonna continue that on the county road, Lakeshore, it will go, I can't remember exactly, it's kind of where the city limits end, and then it goes to the Lew Heron Campground. So we're gonna go that far of doing some, you know, pavement preservation, and then also enhancing the culverts in that, in the, in, along that area, so.
I came around during that wreck, I came around from Donley, West Mountain Road, all the way, the scenic route, and that road was actually in pretty good shape. It was in pretty good shape, little soft spots here and there toward the, this end.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to fix.
For the most part, it was, it was pretty decent shape. Didn't rearrange too much stuff in my truck, so.
The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is in certain parts of the county, we have roads that aren't quite within the public right of way. And so this is on Skidoo, which is just off of Herrick Lane, south end of the valley. So this is, I don't know if it was originally built this way, or over time it just moved, but it doesn't fall within the public right of way. Property owner came in and requested access, which that triggers them to do a, kind of a boundary survey, and then they brought that issue to us. Worked with the legal department in regards to kind of what our strategy should be, and, and the recommendation was to try to reconstruct it within the public right of way.
So we've, we pushed over on private land, is that what you're?
Well, I don't know, like I say, I don't know if it was originally built incorrectly, or if it was both that and the snowplows that were in that area that kept on kind of shifting the road. So we're, we're gonna be, I met with both property owners, they're, they understand, and we are planning on having that probably done by the end of next month. So you'll, you might hear about that.
That's a small loops.
What's that?
Just the small loops.
Yeah. Okay, so last week, I met with the developer on Spink Lane. This is where they're doing, as part of their development agreement. They are supposed to improve part of Spink Lane. It was our initial meeting to help the designers design what they need to do to get it established. Also with that, Idaho Power was onsite to identify specific locations. So just now that we had met with them out onsite, things are progressing. So we will, they'll still need to come in and do the permits, the requirement that they'll have to do as part of this, so. Just so you know that it's, it's in the works.
Awesome.
Summits, okay, summits. Most everything is open except for Deadwood. This morning, Jeff showed me a photo, we went there last week to see if it was open. It was, still had a couple of landslides, but it, it was starting to melt off. Well, I think everybody heard about that, so the side by sides went over a lot of the snow, and within a couple of weeks, it'll probably be open.
This will be a beat up.
Probably in time for the fourths, I'm guessing.
Are you guys gonna, are you guys gonna try to go up there and just, before the fourths, and just clean up the mouse, or?
I think we'll probably end up having to, because there was a fair amount of tree fall in the area. The only other one that I am aware of, I guess Lake Creek is open, but the only other one that I'm aware of that's closed is Elk Creek Summit, so we're still waiting on that. Okay. So West Roseberry, West Mountain, talked with the Geotech, I think we've got some strategies in terms of improving the, the road. I'm gonna guess, based on the cost, I could probably only do maybe a half mile. But we're, I still need the, the actual report. We kind of touched base over the phone in, in regards to what kind of improvement we could do. Most likely it'll be a crabs, this is where they, we, I guess Tamarack did it last year on West Mountain, where they call it crabs because it's cement recycling asphalt base. So what they do is they just kind of grind up the existing, there's a little bit of lift because of that, and then they pave right on top of it, so.
Do they mix?
Adds cement to the base to kind of hold it.
So they do mix cement in with that, that grinding up part? Oh, I follow, I've seen that done before.
So there's a, there's a kind of like a chemistry to it, if you will, you have to have a certain percent of cement in a specific base that will allow, you know, it to withstand a lot of traffic.
I saw him do that down Goose Creek, he did the exact same stuff. I saw him putting the cement into it, it's like, oh, that's the first time I'd seen that, so it must be something that's actually working.
Then the last thing I have here, I I think we had a discussion, maybe a few Commissioner meetings ago, in regards to stormwater. This is where the Soil Conservation Group was wanting us to update or do some resolution. I've reached out to the city of McCall, I'm not ready to give kind of a full because I still need to follow up with a few other jurisdictions. But just so you know, I'm working on it, and I'll give you a full update on what I've, what I find.
Have you got, I mean, you're talking about doing West Roseberry, have you got any more? Anything back from BOR, you know, on that one corner?
I've reached out to them several times, I don't even know who to contact anymore, so.
That's so frustrating.
They're in an interim director, which isn't an excuse, but maybe...
Yeah.
So and I'm still reaching out to Idaho Power several times in regards to our Shaline and 55 location that we were interested in, they, they have that facility there, haven't heard back from them.
I talked to Dylan a week ago, week and a half ago, and asked him about that, I was asking about Attic's building, Geo. Uh, annex building, geothermal and all that, but I brought that one up. He says, yeah, he said, let me look into it and see how far they've progressed with it, he says, like anything else, once they buy property, they. Have a real hard time letting go of it, so uh, we are interested. The property owner that owns the rest of that, how is he for selling?
Oh, he's ready.
Oh, he is.
He was the one that was out there staking it for us.
Oh, seriously?
Yeah, he's very helpful, he's a ve- a really nice guy, so uh. Uh, if this works out, I think there will be no problem in regards to working out a deal with them. Um, but I just need to know yes or no with Idaho Power.
With Idaho Power, I'll, I'll try to reach out to Dylan again and, and see where he's at on that.
Well, the, the other thing I wanted to um, ask about, and this is in relationship to um, agreements. I know that there's a strategy here that you only want to do a one-year agreement because of the commissioners. Or change periodically, however, I'm, I'm only asking this because there's um. A good chance of a cost savings for the county, and what it is, is it, it would be a, a. Not a one-year, but a three-year, uh, you'd probably save, eh, this is a thirty thousand dollar. One-year agreement versus uh, a three-year uh, twelve thousand agreement. I'm just, uh, I'll probably ask more about what we can do. Uh, I'd hate to, you know, uh, have to spend that kind of uh, money. This is in regards to an update on our I-Works program that helps identify um. Pavement preservation, sign inventory, that kind of, uh, they're also including other. Uh, modules to, for, for i- improving our, our overall. Um, capacity to go to the next level, if you will, to.
I don't, you know, we'll talk to the, if you can bring kind of a proposal to us.
Okay.
On that.
Maybe what I'll do is I'll, I'll bring both, and I'll say, this is, this is, you know, the three-year, this is the one-year, this is.
Well, if it's one year, then it should have gone through CIP, right?
This is one I did, this, and they said, you don't have to worry about it because the cost was up low. Uh, if I remember.
Correct.
What's our minimum, isn't it twenty-five thousand? But if it was one year, if it was thirty, so I guess it's on a case-by-case basis, yeah, just bring it to the, as an action item.
Okay, that's all I had.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next up is uh, meeting minutes of June sixteenth.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of June sixteenth as written.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is discussion decision regarding additional invoice. From South Gen- Straff General for tariff costs, um. Who does that?
Um, this is on our um, new building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and in regards to, I believe it was a sub. That was uh, wa- wanting to get paid for the, the additional tariff. On a, on, on their invoice. Um, we talked with uh, the team, the legal and. And uh, Doug and, and Dana and um, have come to a. At least a recommendation for the commissioners to um, decide on, this is really some, your decision. Because it's a contract with the county. But this is a tariff that um. As we all know, tariffs were coming, uh, they could have easily purchased the uh, item earlier. But chose not to. I think our, our recommendation is to um. Uh, deny the request, but it's really your um, ultimate decision in terms of how you wanna. Proceed with tariffs, cause this, this could be an opening door of, of more activity with tariffs here.
And I've, eh, I'm just gonna speak from my own background, you know, when I, I do bids and I, I'm always checking with. My suppliers because everything's like this, always is. And if my bid's gonna be out a while, eh, do I need to be building this into my bid? Um. And I kind of feel like they should have been on board with doing that. That's just Neil's input from my construction history of. That uh, sometimes you just gotta be, be wary of that piece and you have to build it in. That's just my two cents.
I just don't think we set the precedence with this, the, the contractor signed, I believe in September, we're not very far from a year down the road. And in talking to some other contractors and such, there hasn't been a huge tariff increase. So um, I would move that we deny the additional invoice from Straff General for tariff.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That what you wanted? Okay, thank you, Dan, uh, next is approved second annual update. To the Valley County Master Facilities and Comprehensive Financial Plan.
Um, I would like to postpone this, um, I've noticed now it's called the Valley County Event Venue. It was formerly the Fairgrounds, I think I'd like to have a discussion with the commissioners about keeping fairgrounds in there, I think it's just gonna be really misleading. To just call it the Valley County Event Venue. And it will um, possibly cause some tension, re- removing the fairgrounds.
I like they're kind of, kind of muddy, the water's too much in there.
Mm-hmm.
I'm good with that.
So can we table this?
I'll make motion that we tabled this discussion for a later date.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay, last, if not least, is uh, approving the contract with Pacific West Construction for Cascade Annex. Renovation. Mr. Oki.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, this is one that Arnie's been working on, so I don't have really anything to present, uh. I think he sent you the package with the agreement in your, in your packet last week, and so unless you have any specific questions about it. Um, I just.
I really don't. Yeah, that was, uh, I know Arnie's really worked hard on this and taken it to heart and. I know you kind of pushed it over onto him, but he, he's done a good job, I mean, with not only the resolution, but. Getting this thing put to bed and, and negotiating with the contractor and. And getting this all put together so we can get this work done and get our crew moved over there. Do you have any questions on this one?
Uh, the only one I, so we're positive that they have a public works license. It says provide proof, I was just gonna add, before the beginning of the project.
I, I have not seen the contract itself, but it, I recommended Arnie that the, the actual license number be. Memorialized in the contract, so it should be, it should actually be in the agreement, so.
I don't see that it's in there, and I think it should be, shall provide proof of current prior to work.
Yeah, I know, uh, I will say this, I know that uh, Arnie's been in conversations with the, the lead person from them. And he's also verified it on the, the license, the licensing database. There, so, but uh, that was, that may be a question for, for, a better question for Arnie to answer than for me. Commissioner Caldwell, it's referenced in the first paragraph.
Oh, okay, gotcha, it's just not.
Oh, there it is, the very first paragraph there. So, Arnie, thank you for all this hard work.
Sure will.
Can, would, would you be amenable to adding that to the contract that they have to provide proof, that they have to provide the contract prior to work beginning?
Say again?
Provide you a picture of it?
Oh, a, a copy of the license, uh, we can sure request that. You wanna make an amendment to the contract that says we have that on file, uh, a copy of their license?
Okay.
Uh, so in, instead of signing that now, we'll give us some time this afternoon to make that amendment and we'll bring it back for signature. I, I think you can do a, a verbal approval uh, with the, with the recommended change and we can make the change and bring it back.
Actually, I know, Arnie, he's uh, he looked this up when uh. Another gentleman fussed about it and he looked it up right then and says, yes, um. Century Contractors DBA, Pac West Construction.
Uh, I, I think the easiest amendment, if it's, if this meets your approval, Commissioner Caldwell, is that we can. Where it's referenced in that first paragraph, we can uh, make a reference that it'll be attached as, as an exhibit. To the, to the contract itself, and then it'll just be marked as an Exhibit A. Uh, to the, to the contract, I think that's procedurally the, the simplest way to do that.
Okay, so do we wanna do this later this afternoon, you want me to go ahead?
If, if you want, since you've got an action item and it's on, it's in front of you now, if you wanna make the. Uh, I, I think the appropriate motion would be to, if, if you're. If, if you're going to approve it, uh, you can make the motion to approve it subject to the amendment that. That was recommended by Commissioner Caldwell and then that'll satisfy the, the action item. I don't wanna assume, I don't wanna assume you're gonna vote to approve, so uh, but, but if that's your will, that would be the process.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Pacific West Construction for the Cascade Annex renovations. With the amendment to provide a uh, hard copy of the uh. Public Works License, to be an exhibit, like you said, Exhibit A.
Uh, I, I don't know if there's more, I don't know if there's exhibits already attached, but it'll be. Next in sequence to any other exhibit, but yeah.
Okay. On any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brian. So, Arnie, thank him for all this hard work. With that, uh, we will adjourn for lunch.